So good evening and welcome to all of our panelists and guests. Appreciate everyone being here for the start of this event. I am Rabbi Adam Miller on behalf of Temple Shalom, the Greater Naples Chamber of Commerce, the Holocaust Museum and Cohen Education Center, the Jewish Federation of Greater Naples, Naples United Church of Christ and St. Monica's Episcopal Church. Thank you for joining us tonight at this candidate forum for the Collier County School Board election. This event represents an important opportunity for us to interact with the remaining candidates running for the three openings on the Collier County School Board. This is also the first open forum held since the August primary decided who would participate in the runoff election. A few pieces of useful information at the start of our event. First, know that there are six total candidates for these positions. All six were invited several weeks in advance to participate in tonight's forum. They were contacted by phone and email until each gave a response. We acknowledge with gratitude the three candidates who are making the time to be here. We believe that in a democratic society, it is vitally important for elected officials to make themselves accessible to constituents and the voting public. These three candidates will share their goals, present their vision for our schools and answer questions from the community. While there are three candidates here, there are also three open district seats. I want to stress, every voter in Collier County votes for the school board representative for each of the five districts, which means that this year, all voters will have the chance to cast three votes, one for each district race. Note, the three candidates joining us tonight are not in opposition to one another. Each happens to be a candidate from one of the three open districts. Furthermore, all Collier County residents are eligible to vote for these positions. Recognizing that our schools impact the entire community, all residents vote, including those without children enrolled in our public schools. This is also a nonpartisan election. No candidates are formally affiliated with a political party for the purpose of school board elections. In fact, candidates may not campaign as representing a political party. For the purpose of these school board positions, there are no Democrats or Republicans. You will not hear that reference tonight. Instead, one should vote for the candidates they feel will do the best job serving on our school board. Joining us tonight and campaigning for reelection to represent District One is Dr. Jory Westbury, the incumbent. The other candidate for District One is Jerry Rutherford, who recently withdrew from tonight's forum. Campaigning to once again represent District Three is Ms. Jen Mitchell, the incumbent. The other candidate for District Three is Kelly Lichter, who declined to participate tonight. The incumbent candidate to represent District Five is Roy Terry. The other candidate for District Five is Tim Mosher, who declined to participate tonight. The organizers for this forum believe that schools play a vital role in our community. Keeping in mind that Tibetan proverb, "A child without education is like a bird without wings." We want to see all children in our community develop the wings they need to soar and excel in our community as well as on their journey through life. This forum will give the opportunity for those in attendance to hear the candidates answer a set of questions they received in advance and later to take questions from the audience. I'm serving in the role of moderator and will be posing those questions. Candidates know that they have time limits for their responses, allowing us to get through as many topics as possible. For those new to a Zoom webinar format, you may ask questions by using the Q and A tab that you see on your screen. We ask that you please refrain from writing long introductions and keep your questions focused and succinct. Submissions that lack a question will be omitted and submissions may be edited or combined with others of a similar nature by the moderator for purposes of time and clarity. We will endeavor to answer as many questions as possible before our end time at 8:30 PM. Finally, know that this evening's program is being recorded and will be available after we are finished. This is especially important, given that some in our community still do not have reliable internet access in areas which are hardest hit by Hurricane Ian. We hold all those whose lives have been upended by the hurricane in our hearts with prayers for strength and hope during this difficult time. We now move forward and begin our candidate forum. I want to thank all of our candidates for being here tonight and our first question will give us the opportunity to know a little bit more about each of you in your own words. I'm going to start tonight with Dr. Westbury. What inspired you to seek this position on the school board and what are your qualifications to serve in this role?
Honestly, I think I was born to be an educator. I feel that when I took my brother, my younger brother and sister in the dining room and started teaching them when I was probably about six years old and it just grew from there. It's to me, it's a it's an example, it's a lifestyle, it's a belief and it's a commitment. So with saying that, I have been an educator in other states and in Florida and elementary teacher, middle school teacher, assistant principal, principal and along the way was rewarded with a golden apple and Assistant Principal of the Year. Also along the way, I have a BA in elementary education, a master's degree in leadership and a doctorate in administration also. So my career path is, does not diverge, let me just say. I firmly believe in education and being positive and doing the very, very best that we can for our students. Was there another part that I forgot?
You, you hit it all. Thank you. Not being in person, we have to try to judge body language a little differently. So thank you for that answer.
Okay.
That Ms. Mitchell, same question to you. What inspires you to take on this position on the school board? And what are some of your qualifications to serve in this role?
Sure. So I, I'm Jen Mitchell. I'm currently the Chair of the Collier County School Board. I'm a local Realtor here. I'm a mother of four traditional public school students. So I understand the role that education plays in the local economy. As a real estate agent, I also understand the importance of a great education in terms of its impact on, on children and setting them up for future success. So I ran initially back in 2018 because I saw a lot of dysfunction on that board. And actually, a lot of it stemmed from the caustic communication style of, of my opponent actually on the board at that time. She was on the board from 2014 to 2018 and I felt there was too much of a focus on her particular charter school and not enough focus on moving the district forward. The 59 schools that comprise the Collier County Public School District. And so it was important to me that we, you know, cut the quarreling, cut the sidebaring and focus on continuing to move the district forward and progress. And so that's really why I set out to run and, and the fact is COVID ate up two years of our time on this board in the last four years. And so I still have things that I want to accomplish together on the board with my colleagues in terms of policy, in terms of focusing on proficiency in math and reading, really figuring out how to attract and retain great teachers, those types of things. We have a lot of unfinished work to do. And so that's why I am, am continuing and, and, and working to seek a reelection on November 8.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Terry, you've been in this role for several years now and, and served in the school board. What first brought you to the school board? And also, what are some of the things that qualify you to continue to serve in this role?
Well, first of all, when I was looking at retirement at the end of the last term, I decided that we had too many things still going on in the school district that I didn't want to remove myself from that position. I saw that we were going to have to open a new high school, which of course I opened one at Palmetto Ridge before. Also, we were going to have to probably be looking for a new superintendent. And in terms of looking for a new superintendent, we're looking for possibly somebody that's going to run this school system for about 10 years if they stay on and if we do our job and hire the right person. So those are the two main things, but I also was, wanted to stay on because I wanted to represent our students and our teachers. And I think that we need to really focus on our teachers and what we're doing with our teachers in terms of the amount of work that's being put on their backs. And also, we need to find some way to make it more salary conscious in terms of the amount of salary they're getting and also with housing in our county. We have too many teachers that aren't living in the community that they're teaching in. And I think that teachers living in the community make a tremendous difference when students go out in the community and see their teacher as part of their community. So those are the areas I want to specialize on. I also want to say that since I was five years old, I've been involved in education. I've either been going to school or teaching or coaching in school since five years age. So I had a lot of experience and it's a wide variety of experience. I've coached and taught in college. I've taught in high school. I've taught in middle school. I've been an athletic director, been an assistant principal and a principal and I've been on the school board now for over 10 years. So I think I have the tools necessary to continue to do the job as a, a school board member.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Why don't we keep you here while we have you? And you talked a little about some of the objectives you hope to accomplish should, should you be elected of working on the teachers and opening the new school. Can you also share with us, what are the values that you believe our schools should teach our children so that they can be good citizens?
Well, first of all, let me say that one of the most important objectives is to make sure that we maintain safe schools. Schools are the, are the main area where students learn. And if they don't feel safe, then they're not going to be able to concentrate on learning very well. So I think we've done a really good job of that so far in working with the Sheriff's Department and other people in this county to provide safe schools for our students. And that's my main objective. Secondly, is teachers. As I said before, we need to first of all, look at how we can lighten the workload for teachers. We need to look at, at housing, essential housing. Or maybe when we bring young teachers into town, we provide them with a place to live. Where we work on finding out ways that they can get mortgages with a low down payment. Should be very beneficial because teachers can afford to pay the monthly payment for a house. The problem is getting that down payment to move in. Then we need to work on their salary so that they can come and live in Collier County and be part of Collier County. The values that I look at are, first of all, I think we ought to be teaching our students respect. Not only respect for each other, respect for adults and other people in the community. I think they need to learn to work together. And I think we're doing a good job of that with a lot of combination work sessions and classes where students have to work together and where everybody is a part of the final product. And secondly, I think we really have to reestablish the idea that hard work gains a greater success for us. Things aren't just going to be handed to us. We've got to get out there and work. We may have to start at a lower level and then work our way up. But I think those are the things that, the values that, that I think I would like to instill in the students that we have in our school system.
Wonderful. Thank you. Dr. Westbury, why don't you take the next attempt at that question of what are the things that you hope to accomplish? Should you be reelected? And what are the values you want to see instilled in our children going forward?
There are a number of very effective programs that have been put in place in Collier County that work on values without the laboring, the point, let me say. One of the things is kindness and being considerate of your fellow students, you know, your fellow man. And this was instituted a few years ago called the Buddy Bench in elementary schools. And each elementary school has a bench and they had students trained to be ambassadors for making sure that if a child sat on the buddy bench and indicated that I need a buddy, that one of the ambassadors would go over at recess and sit with that student and be a companion and be a friend. And that's a very basic value that I think that we teach at the elementary level. There's another program that started here in Collier called The Leader in Me. And it was started by Stephen Covey. And The Leader in Me program has taken off in every elementary school. And it is developing leaders, leaders that can take part and make decisions and stretch out of their boundaries in a safe, effective manner. And we have amazing things going on with, with our students in elementary. And this program has now morphed into the middle schools. And I think that it is so effective and so empowering for students, not in a powerful kind of way, but empowering them to stretch and to learn. So those are, those are some of the values that I particularly and believe in, and I think it's great for our students.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, what, what do you hope to see in a new term and what are the values you want to see in our children?
The most important thing that we're going to do is select the new superintendent. So that's going to be top of mind. And of course, bringing the community into that process is going to be very important. As I mentioned, attracting and retaining great teachers. Mr. Terry made the point about affordable housing. We have a parcel of land, 35 acres near Manatee Elementary and Middle School that we've owned for 50 years. And we just put out a response for information to potentially develop a, a public-private partnership to allow a developer to come in and use that property to develop some housing that would be for, a set aside for Collier County Sheriff, Collier County Public Schools, EMS and Fire, those, those workforce folks. So that's something that this board has, has tried to move forward and so will be something that we look to, to continue. As I mentioned, improving math and reading proficiency. I think we need to, to get after that like our hair is on fire. And of course, expanding career in technical education. The governor's made clear he wants to lead the nation by that, in that area by 2030. And so we're well on our way. In terms of values, ultimately, you know, it's the job of parents to instill values in their children and the schools need to come alongside them to reinforce those values. And, and so I think things like respect, responsibility, integrity, self-control, hard work, as Mr. Terry said, all those things that The Leader in Me program by Dr. Covey, and some of you may know it by its more familiar name, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. Leader in Me is the student version of that. Those are the types of things that, that we want to instill in our students so that they can make, set positive goals for themselves, make, make smart decisions and hopefully become educated and productive citizens. But again, it's a partnership with the parents, I think, to do that.
Ms. Mitchell, why have you, you touched on something that I think is on everyone's mind, which is that the next school board will be choosing the superintendent who will succeed Dr. Patton. What qualities will you be looking for in that position as superintendent? And it's also been discussed that perhaps superintendent should be a position that is elected rather than appointed. Where do you stand on that matter as well?
So let me just say first and foremost, I, I think a superintendent, it's my opinion, they should be appointed. I don't want a superintendent that blows in the political wind and is chasing votes. Okay. So I think it's really important that they're singularly focused on increasing student achievement. And to me, you know, my laundry list of, of expectations are going to be someone with a clear vision for the district moving forward, someone who can effectively communicate, someone who knows how to build a great culture in the district among employees and staff, someone who is very fiscally responsible and transparent. And so along the lines of what I mentioned earlier, really focused on attacking math and reading proficiency. That's also going to be a key. So, so that means that person has to be an instructional leader. They have to come with some bona fides in terms of instructional leadership. So those are, that's my wish list.
That's quite a list. Dr. Westbury, what are you thinking about in terms of the next superintendent? And how should we be using our superintendents here in Collier County?
Well, I agree with what Ms. Mitchell said, but I also think that it's important for the person that comes in here to have experience in a large school district. Because having 48,000 students in Collier County means many, many, many employees. And you can't just step into that if you've been a superintendent or an assistant superintendent in a school district of 5,000 students. It's just not the same. The other thing I, I really believe in is that the person should be professional, be transparent, be a synergistic leader and a listener and a communicator and someone who honestly puts heart and soul into their role as a superintendent.
Thank you. Mr. Terry, what are you thinking about in terms of the next superintendent?
Well, a lot of the same things that the other two mentioned, I think, were all very important. I think that my main thing is I want a superintendent that has some experience. I think they either need to have been a superintendent or an assistant or, or deputy superintendent at one time or another in a large school district. I think that we, you know, we're a pretty large school district here in Collier County compared to the rest of the country with 48,000 students. I think we're 115th in the nation in terms of size of, of school district with the size of Delaware. But I think experience is a big qualifier. I think they ought to be well respected by their peers. When you call up and ask people about them, they should speak with them with respect and that they respect their decision. Not necessarily they always agree with everything they did. They respect and how they handled the job and how they went about the process. I also think they need to be involved in the community. I mean, not now, but when they get here, they need to involve themselves in the community because we, we, you know, we have to depend on our community to help us provide opportunities for our students. We don't do it alone in the school system. We do it because we have about 60 or 70 groups out in the community that work with us, with our students. And that's tremendous benefit and I would hope the next superintendent would carry that on. And I also think that we need to have somebody that does hard work. We can find that out from people that we talk to and talk to about them. That doesn't mean they have to spend 24 hours a day in the office. But when they're there, they're concentrating on what they're doing with our students and providing for them. And I would agree with Ms. Mitchell that they need to be an instructional leader in, in one way or another, especially in this day and age.
Thank you. All three of you have mentioned at one time or another, the question of teacher retention and engagement. So we'd like to shift gears to that and, and see if there's other ideas you have or other things you'd like to share about what it will take to engage teachers going forward and also to address those who might have been affected or displaced by Hurricane Ian and what you foresee its impact being on our community. Dr. Westbury, why don't you start with this one?
Okay, let me unmute here. Oh, I am unmuted. Okay. Hiring and retaining teachers at this point is very, very difficult. It's a challenge. We've gone through COVID. That's presented many, many difficulties for teachers and students as well and their families. But in the reality, teachers have always had more work beyond the school day than they could ever accomplish. And I know this from my early, earliest teaching positions. And I, when I see the stress the teachers are under today with even more challenges, whether it's COVID or whether it's Ian, there are, the, the state has adopted new standards for teachers and for their coursework. They have, it's been challenging to have teachers get materials, but they have the curriculum maps from the state and they're supposed to teach that, but they didn't get the standards right away and they didn't get the materials. And so they're just like kind of clawing their way to success when it's particularly challenging for them. There are also some, the polarization that I see in our community is very negative for teachers. They don't feel supported and they don't feel that, that they're being paid enough for what they're doing. And this is a very challenging time and it's very competitive to try to get teachers into our community, especially with the standard of living here.
Thank you. Mr. Terry, why don't you give some, your thoughts on teacher retention and engagement? I you shared a little bit before. That's a particular area of emphasis for you.
It is. I think this is very important one. And it's one of the things that I think is going to really have a big impact on education over the next few years. I think we need to find multiple ways to get teachers certified. We have a lot of people out there that maybe were in business for a long period of time. And all of a sudden, they decided to get out of the business and go into something else and they want to go into teaching. And we need to make it easier for them to make that transition from teaching into the teaching field. I also think, as I said before, that I think we need to find ways that we can improve the salary of teachers. Where they're very, should be very highly respected. Even though in the last few years, as Dr. Westbury mentioned, unfortunately, they've become under attack. And I might say that I think it's unjustified, the attacks that our teachers are coming under by, you know, saying they're doing things that we're not doing. Sure, we may have a teacher sometime that puts out a worksheet that maybe isn't agreeable to everybody. But we have over 3,000 teachers in our district and we can't judge all our teachers by one instance that a teacher does. And that disheartens me to see that happen. I think as we mentioned, we need to find ways to provide housing for teachers, one way or another. I looked into trying to find ways that we could get mortgages reduced or that we could, you know, find places for teachers to live. Our district right now is doing a tremendous job of trying to locate places for teachers that may be out of their house at this point in time due to the hurricane. So I think we need to work with teachers that way. And like I said, we need to get our teachers back in our communities. Not living north of here, but in the community that they're teaching in. I think that's a big, a big plus. And then we need to recruit. We need to go out and find teachers. One of the ways I, I think we really could, could recruit is by offering students some type of scholarship. And if they went to school with a certain scholarship, they'd come back here to teach for four or five years. And then that may be one way that we can recruit high academic teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, you also touched on this subject a little bit earlier as well about teacher retention in the future. What do you see in this area?
So to, to Mr. Terry's point, I think we need to create in this community, a culture of support and respect for our teachers. And I will acknowledge that there have been some crazy headlines around the country in the last couple of years, particularly during COVID when schools were shut down and teachers not behaving the best. But those types of things don't happen here in Collier regularly. And the fact is, when they do, we have policies in place to handle teacher misconduct. And so I think this idea, when, when we talk about, for example, CRT, And so I think this idea, when, when we talk about uh, for example, CRT or uh, uh, this supposed LGBTQ agenda, you know, when we, when we level that charge, we're really accusing teachers of doing something uh that they're just not doing here in Collier. Um, and so I think that's, it, it, it makes them feel um undervalued. It makes them feel um targeted and attacked. And so um, I think we really need to create a culture of support and respect for our teachers. Um, I think in terms of pay, obviously, we're, we, we couldn't afford to pay them what they're worth. Um, how do you put a price tag on what they really do if you look at what they really do um in terms of humanity? Uh, but I think here in Collier, you know, we're the second highest paid teachers in the state and it's still not enough. Um, we pay insurance, we're one of the only districts that pay insurance premiums for our teachers. And again, it's still not enough. So um, we really do have to look at pay. We have to look at uh the support, respect for the, for the profession, affordable housing, obviously, as Mr. Terry mentioned and I mentioned earlier, is something that we can do to get those young teachers into the community. You know, so many times we get teachers down here, they interview, they're excited to, to take the job and, and then they go and try to find a place to live and, and they have to rescind uh their decision. So uh because they can't afford to live here. So lots of things that we can do. Um, but ultimately, we need to make sure that they feel valued. Um, and so I think too, in terms of uh the hurricanes specifically, uh, we created a pool of leave time so that employees who were not impacted could donate leave time to those who were. Um, we also uh created a fund uh to collect donations um and, and gather resources. So as Mr. Terry mentioned, uh, we have someone working to find housing for those teachers who have been displaced. Uh, that list is over a hundred people deep right now. Uh, because many of our teachers, I think around twenty-five percent of our staff lives in Lee County. So um, we're definitely going to have to get creative. Um, but at the end of the day, I think it comes down to respect for the profession, um treating them with dignity and um and continuing to, to show them that we value them through salary initiatives and that type of thing.
Thank you. I'm going to pause for a moment and it's, I know some have joined in after we initially started. And we've gotten a few questions wondering about the candidates who are here. Just a reminder that all six candidates were invited to this. We are grateful to the three who have chosen to come. They were, I, all were invited several weeks ago to participate in this forum. One declined from the beginning, one declined more recently, and one withdrew within the last day. We are grateful to these three candidates who are here answering our questions, talking to us about their plans for our school system. And what they envision going forward as they also will be listening to our questions. Again, if you have questions, please use the Q and A tab to write those questions. We'll try to get to those later during our question and answer segment. I want to come back, Ms. Mitchell, if you don't mind, to you to start our next question, which is that during our primary debates, Mr. Rutherford and some of the other candidates advocated for bibles and specific religious values to be taught in our schools. What's your position on the subject of prayer in schools? Something I've seen come up in our Q and A, and this is also a question we had talked about in advance, as well as teaching religion in classrooms and the distribution of religious materials on school grounds.
Let me start by saying, um, just right out of the gate, you know, students can pray in school. They can pray privately. It can't be teacher-led, but they can pray. They can read from their Bible. They can read from their Torah. They can read from the Quran. Again, it just cannot be teacher-led. We have courses in the state of Florida in the course code for uh world religions, Hebrew studies. Those are the appropriate places for that type of, of discussion, right? Um, and so this idea that, that our students aren't allowed to pray in schools, to me is just it, it starts from a false premise because the fact is they are. Um, we just, we do not allow staff to lead those activities. And, and it's as simple as that. The Supreme Court has upheld it. Um, I believe in the rule of law. And um, and I think again, if someone um is so inclined and they want to take an elective around any of those type of courses I mentioned, they certainly can. Uh, but I think it's important if we value religious freedom uh that we want to make sure that we are inclusive of all and respecting of all the various religions. Um, and, and that's where I land on that.
Thank you. Dr. Westbury, how about your thoughts on this subject?
I agree with what Mrs. Mitchell said. And for um just an example of how children can still play or pray in school. I mentioned this to another um citizen recently and she said, as long as their test in school, kids are going to pray. And it, you know, it just struck me is hilarious, but it's so true. I mean, I think it's true of, you know, all of us when we get into a tough situation. But we have a moment of silence at our school board meetings. And we have been um accosted through the years about having someone of a particular religion come in and lead a prayer at the school board meetings. And we are vehemently opposed to that. If you have your moment of silence and prayer, that's totally up to you. But to bring in one particular religion to say that that's, that's what we're going to do? No. No, that doesn't, that doesn't settle with me.
Thank you, Dr. Westbury. Mr. Terry, what's your thought on these questions of religion and prayer in school?
But let me just say, we serve all students in Collier County. We don't serve uh just the Jewish students. We don't serve the Christian students. We don't serve the Muslim students. We don't serve the atheist students. We serve all those students. And so it's very difficult for me to see the hypocrisy where you demand that parents have the rights to do all these things with their kids over anybody else. But then at the same time, we want to press our own religion on other kids in school. That just doesn't seem uh right to me. I think that, you know, in public schools, uh prayer is said every day, as Ms. Dr. Westbury said, when, whenever there's a test, there's always a prayer being said. And uh, I think that uh, uh, and silent prayer is fine. Students pray all the time by themselves, to themselves. And uh, like Ms. Mitchell said, there are classes in religion. If we wanted to put one in, we could, but we would teach all religions. We would teach everything to our students, let them make their own minds. And then also, uh, there was a day when we had a religious uh a distribution day where, where religious groups would come up and pass out literature one day out of the year in the schools. I'm not sure whether we're doing that still or not, to be honest with you. But uh, that would be the time to do it if you wanted to pass something out. I don't believe that uh, and I come from a long line of ministers. My grandfather, my father, my son are all Methodist ministers or were. And uh, and I'm the only one, but I said I've saved more souls in school business than they did in the church any day.
Thank you, Mr. Terry, for adding that, that a little bit of humor there at the end. It is certainly a subject on the minds of many. While I have you here, why don't you take the next question? What role should parents and professionally trained educators play respectively? And the development of curriculum and the determination of curriculum guidelines?
Well, you know, this is one thing that I think parents certainly have a big part to play in the schools and the development of schools and, and uh, you know, saying what their, that their students are being taught. And uh, I think we need to listen to parents. But at the same time, I think that when it comes time to, after listening to parents and gathering the things that they say and that they offer, you have to have an educational and uh instructional person uh who comes in and develops a curriculum for the whole county. Because I can guarantee you that there, the, the whole county isn't going to agree, parents agree on one certain type of thing. And so somebody has to take charge and do the job and make sure that they listen to them. And that they apply what they say to all the curriculums that are available and pick the one that best meets the needs of the students in the schools at, at that time. So uh, I think parents have a part to play. I think the instructors and the uh, and the administrators at the schools also have a part to play. And somebody has to make a decision and uh, it's going to be somebody in the schools.
Ms. Mitchell, what's your feeling on the role of educators as opposed to parents and how they respectively play a role in curriculum development and guidelines?
Yes, so uh, as a mother of four children in our traditional public schools, I'm here uh as, as a board member today because of um, my passion for education and wanting to ensure uh a seat at the table. And I will tell you, so I, I absolutely support parents having a, a voice uh in terms of their child's education. And, and the fact is here in Collier, we allow for that in many ways. You know, we have textbook committees, we have uh media center committees now. We, we've set that process up. Um, we have opportunities in terms of reproductive health. Parents can come in and sit, sit down and go through the materials. They, we've made it even easier. They can look online. We keep our materials online for them to review and make the determination of, if they want their child to participate in, in that, those particular lessons. So lots of opportunities for parents to have a voice. Um, I think ultimately, we, we need to partner with, with parents. Um, so that we are, as I, as I mentioned earlier, you know, parents, it's their job to instill values. It's our job to come alongside them and reinforce those values. Um, and I think the fact is, most parents here in Collier County trust what's happening here in Collier County. Um, if, if you see what, what, who, who is participating in our board meetings, who's who um are the people that are objecting to things in the community, they are not our parents. Um, and so that's not to take away from those community members. They certainly have a voice. They're taxpaying citizens, but but I think on the whole, parents in Collier County are satisfied. We've, we've really made great changes here in Collier County uh in terms of education in the last ten, twelve years. So um, absolutely a seat at the table. We allow for that through PTO and SAC as well. Um, and so I think again, just reaffirming that partnership with the schools and the home uh is always going to be important if we want to work together as a team for the best outcomes.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Dr. Westbury, where are you on curriculum development?
You know, we have um standards that come from the state. And those standards and those, those curriculum guidelines are things that we need to follow. It doesn't mean that we can't have dialogue about it, that we can't have choices in resources. And we, we need that dialogue with our parents. It's very important. And we need dialogue with each other across buildings and across the uh, across the hallways. We have to follow state, state guidelines. But because parents and educators and citizens are encouraged to give their input, then we need to be listeners and collaborate with them.
Thank you. And Dr. Westbury, picking up on this theme of, of guidelines and lists, but also input. Across the country, there have been numerous books, including George Orwell's nineteen eighty-four, Ray Bradbury's Fahrenheit four fifty-one, Beloved by Toni Morrison, as well as some Holocaust-related texts such as Mouse, Night and the Diary of Anne Frank that have been removed from curriculums or libraries with designations that they have inappropriate material. What's your view of censorship like this in an educational setting?
Well, one of the things I've noticed over my years in education is that when you ban a book, it makes people go out and read it. And especially, especially our adolescents. And so I know that there, there is a process in place in Collier County schools to review questionable books. And the process includes parents and community members, literacy specialists, teachers, and so on. The last four books that came into question um and were referred to the school board as a result of those committees and their communication together. We, as school board members, read those four books so that we could become more aware and knowledgeable about what they contained. And they, we could dismiss the concerns and vote based on we did, we did not want to dismiss the concerns, let me say. We wanted to listen and to put forth um some suggestions and guidelines and so on. And that process is going to continue. So what I, what I'm saying is that because this process is in place, I think that we're all better equipped to deal with some of the issues that come up. And we have a process where if a parent decides that I don't want my child to read that book and it's still in the media center, they have to show that they have parent permission to do that. So I think we've covered our bases. Of course, there's always someone that's going to come up with you know, a little, but I think we've covered our bases.
Thank you, Dr. Westbury. Ms. Mitchell, what's your feeling about this, the way books and materials like this are handled?
Yes, so you know, I fully understand censorship is certainly a slippery slope, but I think it's, it's incumbent on us as a school board uh to ensure that we're providing materials that have educational value. And so there's an opportunity cost there. Um, so when we're providing books that do not have the utmost in educational value, uh, excuse me, when we're providing books that do not, then, then we could be providing books that do. And so that's your opportunity cost there. So, so I think we need to look at that, but I, but I will tell you sexually graphic and explicit books absolutely, in my opinion, should require parent permission. Collier County Public Schools has had a longstanding policy around movies, for example. If a teacher wants to show a movie that is higher than a G rating, they've had to ask parent permission. So to me, it's no different with regard to a book. Now, keep in mind, I'm talking books like Kite Runner, Beloved, Louis Dye. These are AP College Board uh books that kids read for college credit. So I'm not, I'm not making a value judgment in terms of their literary value, societal value, political value. Um, just that they have sexually graphic and explicit content. And so um, I believe in that case, if we really believe in parents' rights, it's not for me to say that your child can't read Kite Runner and earn college credit for Kite Runner. Uh, because I think that that is pornographic. And so what we decided to do is a book that has graphic and explicit content, move it to a restricted list that requires parent permission. So a child can still read that book if they bring forward parent permission. Again, if you believe in parent rights, what's one parent to say over another parent what their child has access to? So I think it's, that's, you know, it gets slippery there. Um, but again, strictly graphic and explicit material, I think we need to require parent permission. And that's what, that's what we've done here in Collier.
Okay. Mr. Terry, what's your position on this? And then we've gotten a few follow-up questions. So I'm going to stay in this area in a moment, but first I want to give Mr. Terry a chance to give his thoughts on
Pretty much the other two have stated, I think that in Collier County, we've uh seen this as a as a problem with some of the books that we have in our libraries. And we have taken a step where we are leaving that up to the parent to decide as to whether they want their child to read that book or not. And we're taking books uh not off the shelf, we're leaving the covers of the books on the shelf. Student would come up, say, I want to check out this book. And then the uh, the media specialist would call the parent and find out if they have permission to read that book or not. So I, and I'm not, I'm not saying that for all books. I think just like uh, as Mitchell said, I think the pornography has no place in a, in a school library. Uh, but at the same time, there are some parents or a course that may require some type of reading that that parent should be able to get permission for their child to read that book. But uh, other than that, I think all the books stay in the library, in my personal opinion.
So I'll, I'll leave this as an open question for the three of you because I've gotten a few of these comments coming in. People want to know specifically in regard to Holocaust education materials, which often show graphic images from the concentration camps and from the horrors of what the Nazis did during World War Two, as well as on other subjects where that kind of material comes up. How do you justify censoring that, which can also be teaching a valuable educational lesson?
I uh, I don't know that I would censor that. I think that uh, you know, I'm, I think we're talking about porno, pornography or something to that effect. Uh, I think that in terms of Holocaust, uh, some of those pictures of Holocaust just remind us of uh, of the past. some of those pictures of Holocaust just remind us of of the past. And so that we don't forget in the future on what we uh, what we need to be aware of in dealing with world. So I think they make their point, but I don't think it's a pornographic point. I think it's a strictly a different type of point. And I think it's very important that those books are available to our students. Unfortunately, that was what, about seventy years ago now, eighty years ago? And it sometimes time has a way of making or allowing us to forget the horrible actions that were taken by a small group of people to take advantage of another group of people. And I think we need to remind ourselves continually about the horrors of those types of situations.
Ms. Mitchell or Dr. Westbury, do either of you want to add to that?
I would just say, I would like to clarify, yes, in terms of content, I'm talking strictly explicit, sexually explicit and graphic are the books that we're talking about requiring parent permission. And to the point about the 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 some of the more graphic depictions and explanations around things like the Holocaust, those things are addressed in the state standards and we absolutely teach them and we must, as Mr. Cherry said, it's incumbent on us to make sure that people don't forget.
Yes, I'd like to jump in too. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In the standards for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year in the state of Florida include the Holocaust. And I don't know if many people are aware of that. It was just a stroke of luck that I ran into a person at the Florida School Board Association who has written a curriculum regarding the Holocaust and the Holocaust Living Learning Experience. And this curriculum is going from fifth grade to college levels. And it informs people about the harmful effects of language and hate and prejudice. And meets, this program meets a hundred percent of the state mandated benchmarks. And I'm very excited to tell you that when I brought this to the attention of Dr. Patton, she looked into it and she had a lot of impressive, impressive things to say about this curriculum. And this curriculum is by Morse Life, M O R S E L I F E. And it's called Next Generations, and we will be implementing this in Collier County. One of the things I want you to know is that it, the curriculum teaches to be up standards versus bystanders. It's a sole source provider for the state of Florida. It has two major elements. One is that it has a docent facilitated lesson. And second, it has a survivor present an oral history and stories of courage. And it's especially dear to my heart that it's teaching upstanders versus bystanders.
Thank you, Dr. Westbury, for that information about the Holocaust program. Thank you each for answering that follow-up question. There was one more question that we gave you in advance, and we'll shift fully into the Q and A part. And there are a lot of questions that are coming up, so I hope you're you're all three of you ready with your mute unmute skills on point. The last question we had asked you to think about in advance is what do you see as the three most significant challenges that lie ahead during the next term for the school board? Ms. Mitchell, why don't you start off?
Yeah, so I think first and foremost, it's going to be finding a superintendent to continue us on this forward progression that we've enjoyed for the last twelve years under Dr. Patton's leadership. I think, again, you've sort of talked about attracting or retaining great teachers, that's going to be a challenge for the foreseeable future. And then my personal opinion, and I don't know how my fellow board members feel, but I really feel strongly about math and reading proficiency specifically reading proficiency and improving that because up until third grade, you know, you're learning to read, after third grade, you're reading to learn. And so I think it's going to take a lot of money in professional development at K one and two teachers. And some some tutoring and some of those more strategic, a more strategic approach, I would say, to literacy than than what we're currently doing. So those are my three.
We'll go for a moment to Dr. to Dr. Westbury, and we'll come back to Mr. Terry.
I I am seeing a big challenge with what's happening in society. And it's very troubling to me. I think that we maybe as a result of the hurricane, at least in Florida, that we have hope, that we have a wake-up call and hopefully can stop the adversarial posturing, start telling the truth, listen without judgment, stop the fear mongering, and help our fellow Americans, no matter where you came from. This is a huge concern to me. And I can say that being a board member in Collier County has not been pleasant for several board meetings, reaching into last last school year, people screaming at us and calling us names and threatening us and and so on. And this this is not the American way. And it's very troubling to me. I think that's a huge issue, a societal issue that we have to deal with.
Thank you. Mr. Terry?
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. First of all, I think the next superintendent is a very, very important thing that's going to happen. It's going to come on us quickly. And like I said before, hopefully, they will be here for another ten years, like Dr. Patton has been, a little over ten. So it's going to have a tremendous effect on our school system and on our children here in Collier County. And hopefully, we'll be able to pick a good superintendent. I also think that one of the big things is working on ways to bring parents into the conversation. Different ways that we can reach out to parents and make them feel like they're involved in what's going on in our school district. There seems to be a breakdown in that area in terms of of parents feeling involved, even though, you know, we have, if we have forty-eight thousand, technically, I guess, we've got about a hundred thousand parents. But so it's tough to get them all involved, but there's got to be ways that we can work through our schools and get parents more involved. One is SAC committees. I tell parents all the time, you get involved in a SAC committee at your school, you're going to have more impact on what's going on in that school than anyplace else. Those are school advisory committees, and every school has them. And it's a very important job. And the third thing I think is hiring and retaining teachers. We've got to concentrate on that and make sure that we do the things necessary to make the job enjoyable for teachers to participate in, and that they feel respected and that they feel like they're making contribution.
Thank you all. And as I said, we're now going to transition from our questions we shared with you in advance to some questions that you're hearing now, but I imagine they're questions you've been hearing along the way throughout this process as you've been running for election for the school board. A few people have asked questions about trying to understand where you stand versus the other individuals who are running in your particular districts. We have also a few people writing in to thank the three of you for taking the time to come and talk to us about this. I'd like to give each of you a moment to talk about your person, the race that you are in, and what differentiates you from the other candidate? And please identify who the other candidate is in your race so that people know who it is that is running for election in our community. And I'll leave it open, so who wants to go first for this one?
I'll go first, since I'm unmuted, and I might as well go ahead. My my opponent is Mr. Mosier. And I would say that we have some very definite disagreements on some certain things that he and also the others have been promoting. And and mine is, is that when I look at the school budget, I look from year to year, and we have to be able to provide the money for the programs that we have in the school system right now each year from year to year. Now, sometimes that's going to increase because of the inflation and other things that may be going on. But the opponents want to cut federal aid. I'm sure they don't know how much federal aid we get. They also want to go back to the rollout rate. I'm sure they don't know what that would mean to our budget, but those two things together are two hundred and fifty million dollars. Hundred and fifty-three million for federal aid and ninety-five million from the cut, from the rollback rate. Now, I can see in the in the federal money that, you know, you're going to lose JROTC. You're going to lose a lot of money for special needs students. You're also going to eliminate school lunches and school and funding for school, school lunches. So that's, you know, that's pretty well what's going to be cut out of that money. But when you go to the rollback rate, you know, that's going to come down to a decision. Do you cut the fine arts? Do you cut music programs? You cut athletic programs? You know, and do you do you not provide nurses in every school? Do you not provide trainers for all athletic events? That's ninety-five million dollars. That's almost, when you look at our budget, our budget is really about, you know, nine hundred million some dollars. When you get down duplications and other things, it's not one point four billion. But when you look at that, that's twenty-five percent of the budget they're recommending that we cut. And when you cut that much money, two hundred and fifty million, you're going to have to cut programs someplace. And they need to come forward and tell us what they're planning on cutting, not just making it look like they're saving everybody all this money.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Who would like to go next?
I'm happy to jump in. My opponent is Kelly Lichter. She served on the school board here in Collier County from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen. She founded Mason Classical Academy, which by all accounts is a very successful charter school here in Collier. But I will tell you, my my, one of my biggest concerns is is the fact that we have a local businessman here who has spent nearly a quarter of a million dollars to lie about Collier County Public Schools and about the three of us personally and paint us a certain way. And it's unfortunate because we, this this board, because of the hard work of a lot of people, we have seven thousand employees, have been able to keep the district moving forward on a positive trajectory. And so these claims of, you know, raising your taxes a hundred million dollars. Let me be clear, your taxes went up because your your home values went up by nearly thirty percent this year. Our budget is a direct result of the revenue generated from property taxes. So the fact is, we actually voted for a lower mileage. And so if you're a homesteaded owner, your taxes actually went down this year. So that was one of the 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 lies that was perpetuated out there. I think it's important that Collier County voters know that my opponent has, I believe, were up to nine pending lawsuits. Some in circuit courts, some in federal court involving CCPS, Hillsdale College, their president, Erica Donalds, a former board member here in Collier County, multiple former parents at her charter school who have questioned her leadership there. And so I think that's very concerning. Over two point one million dollars has been spent just in the last two years in lawsuits. And and by the way, taxpayers are paying that because a charter school is is privately run, but it's publicly funded. So just in the last two years, two point one million dollars. And then, you know, the history of parents bringing concerns to leadership there, to her specifically, and not only being turned away, but really run off, oftentimes mocked on social media or sued. So th- those are my concerns. Those are the things that I think the voters need to understand about this race. I have no agenda other than to continue to deliver a world-class education to students in Collier County. I, you know, I understand that I serve students that don't look like me, vote like me, worship like me. We take every student that walks through our doors. And our teachers work hard, they to do the very best that they can regardless of the challenges that our students come to us with. And so I would just, I would just say, please do your homework. A quick Google search is your friend.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Dr. Westbury, tell us about your race.
My race is interesting. Jerry Rutherford is a longtime Collier County resident. He's a very nice man. I like Jerry. I don't think that he's qualified to serve on a multi-million dollar school board with the complexities that go on in education today. I mentioned my educational background. I mentioned my teaching qualities, and I have been involved with Collier County Schools for over forty years. And I think that I have the background and the knowledge, the drive and the commitment to continue in my role as a school board member.
Thank you to the three of you for clarifying those races. One of the things that came out in that conversation was Ms. Mitchell mentioning that there's some misconceptions that are out there about our public schools and where things stand right now. Here's an opportunity that a couple of people have asked. They've heard a lot of criticism of our schools recently. What is a misconception and what would actually need to be corrected from your perspective?
Can I jump in on that?
Absolutely. This is a, we're in the Q and A free-for-all at the moment, yes.
Okay, so we certainly have a lot to be proud of here in Collier County, but I'm often asked the question, how can you be an A-rated district? You know, when thirty-five percent of your students are not proficient in math and reading, which means they didn't score a three, four, or five on the state test. And the fact is that certainly remains our greatest challenge. But it's not a challenge that you need to call here. In fact, that number, not proficient, is higher statewide and even higher still nationally. But I will tell you, Florida, Florida maintains very high standards. They set very high cut scores, if you will. Cut scores being what constitutes an A, a B, a C, and so on. So keep in mind, Collier County is an A-rated district. Sixty-five percent of our students are determined based on test scores to be proficient in math and reading, meaning thirty-five percent are. The highest scoring district in the state of Florida is St. John's, and they their score is seventy-two. So we hear this, what, you know, when is sixty-five? When at, when was sixty-five ever an A? Again, it's that it's those very high standards, those very high cut scores. And the fact is, Florida is from twenty years ago, where they were ranked thirty-second and thirty-fourth in math and reading respectively nationwide, they're now fourth and sixth respectively nationwide. And Collier County is in the top five of that. So we really do have a lot to be proud of. And so I think it's just important to correct the record about what our school, what our district A rating means and what it means to have proficiency in areas of math and reading.
I would also add to that, but I noticed the other day that Broward County score is forty-eight. You know, so there's a wide range of scores there, but the top score is seventy-two and we're sixty-six, I believe. And so it's 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 not a very good argument, I don't believe. I also think that, you know, there's also the claims that we're teaching CRT and everything else, and we do not teach CRT, we teach history. And with our teachers are very conscious of not making that appear to be favorable. uh, appear to be favorable to one group or another. We just teach history. And that's what, if you talk to our history teachers, that's what they'll tell you. That's what they teach. We don't teach CRT.
My turn?
Your turn.
Okay. Collier County has the highest migrant population of all the counties in Florida. When you think about that and these children being raised by non-English speaking parents. And by the way, we have over 105 different dialects from students in Collier County. That is a huge challenge and it's one that we embrace and we work on. But it's going to take those children a longer time to master the English language and be able to read and comprehend. That's just the reality. They are going home to non-English speaking homes. And so the only time that they are able to have instruction in English is when they are in school. The other thing that's very discouraging to me is how people of the naysayers just put a broad brush on everything about the county. There's nothing right. That I've never heard a kind word or hey, you're doing really well in this, but maybe you need to look at this. We do look at all the deficits. We do look at the challenges. We embrace them. And our educators are working so hard to bring all of these students up to where they need to be. It just takes time. And there are, oh my gosh. There are schools all over Collier County right now in spite of the challenges that they've had from Ian. But they're taking up the gauntlet to provide what others need. And I couldn't be prouder of these schools. These are the role models helping future role models. And why I was inspired to be an educator. It's the profession that makes all others possible.
Let me just add one thing too. I think it's important to realize that over the last five years where we've maintained an A district, we've had Hurricane Irma. We've had COVID. And now we've had Hurricane Ian. And we've maintained an excellent academic record during that time. As a matter of fact, while other districts are complaining about their scores dropping because of not getting back in schools, we brought our students back in schools within three months after we closed down and went virtual. And then we've had them back in schools for the last two years. And our students actually scored higher on the tests than they did the year before. Which I think is a tremendous compliment to our teachers, our administrators, and everybody else in Collier County for the job that we've done. And people ought to be thanking them for what they're doing with their children.
Thank you all for those answers. I want to make sure we get to some of these other questions that are here and I'm going to ask your forgiveness that I'm going to try to glom together several different questions that all came in. So just be a little patient, a little bit of a long intro to get to this, but I, I want you to know that there have been a lot of questions coming in concerned about antisemitism, both in our community and our school. Um, to put all these pieces together, uh, nationally and locally, there's been a rise in antisemitism in our own community. There were the antisemitic flyers that appeared this summer at homes around Naples. Uh, the Naples Daily News reported this summer about antisemitic social media posts from a staff member of Mr. Mosier's campaign. Uh, you, you can find that on the Naples Daily News website, that story. And in our schools, there have been reports of students having pennies thrown at them. One student having a Star of David necklace ripped off of their neck. Others of swastikas being drawn on folders or even on the arms of students. And in one instance, there is a Photoshop meme of a Jewish student's head on the body of a camp, concentration camp prisoner with a frightening caption, "My first day at camp, wish me well." This is some chilling pieces that are happening here in our own community, in our schools. What can and will you do as school board members to address this rise of antisemitism that we're seeing around us?
So I, I, if I may, um, so I will tell you, when I was made aware of the incident with the, the meme, I was very pleased to know that we took a hard line with regard to that and we actually placed that student in alt school. Because there's, there's no place for that in our schools. Um, and so I was very, very pleased to know that we did that. In, in the course of learning more about that particular incident, I came to know about the swastika that was drawn on a student, uh, or, and the necklace that had been, um, pulled. I think it goes back to, um, as Dr. Westbury said, you know, it starts with teaching kindness. It starts with teaching respect. And, and, um, you know, dignity of the, of the human person and respect for differences. Um, and so we have a duty to educate our students about, you know, things like the Holocaust, uh, slavery as they happen so that we can make sure that students understand the full breadth of history and, and, and are not doomed to repeat it. And so I think when we, when we, uh, expect better, our students will do better. And I think we need to take a hard line when it comes to those types of things, for sure.
Let me just say that, uh, my opponent is the gentleman that you were referring to in a couple of the articles. But when you talk about, uh, respect, kindness, after Parkland, SEL became a requirement to be able to teach some of those skills to our students. And yet SEL now has become under attack by the opponents who think, uh, of CRT and everything else, they're brainwashing kids or you're, uh, doing this or that. And, uh, we need to teach those skills. We need to teach kids about kindness and about, uh, growing up and respecting others and others' thoughts. But we have an opponent, which is my, my opponent, who, uh, who, when he's asked if, uh, if they support antisemitism, his answer was no comment. And nothing was answered after that for about three or four days. Now, when you answer that question, which in my mind is pretty simple, you don't answer with no comment, you should automatically be able to say, no, I don't support antisemitism. When he asked, you know, do you just support your campaign managers Facebook page? He answered, I looked at it and have no problem with it. Now these are just two incidences where he's finally come out and said some things. And he keeps putting his foot in his mouth, to be honest. And, uh, I think that, you know, you got to look at those things and if, if they've, if you've got those feelings about those things, what does he feel about other things?
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to add, go rewind for just one second because I think this is a very powerful conversation we're in. But some of the terminology might not be familiar to everyone. Um, I'll ask our panelists, they want to explain a little bit, some of the terms that have come up, alt school, SEL, CRT, spell them out a little bit so that people understand what it is that we are talking about.
SEL is social emotional learning. Okay. It's to teach students to be kind to people or to have respect for people. But that's what it stands for. Social emotional learning came out after the Parkland shooting, where that student who had been evidently harassed in school and things came in and, and unfortunately, uh, killed a number of students at Parkland High School over in Broward County. And, uh, so, uh, that's pretty much what that means.
I can, I made reference to alternate school. Alt school is alternate school. Uh, so we do not expel students. Uh, what you saw with Parkland, with Nicholas Cruz is that he was expelled. So he, uh, was removed from schools altogether. He had a lot of free time on his hands. Uh, we do not expel students. We alternately place them. And so if they are removed from their, their zone school, we place them, uh, in, in our alternate schools.
And they can eventually graduate after going to alternate schools. They behave themselves and work their way through, but they're not with others, well, they are with some other students. But not, uh, not the whole population.
Thank you for those clarifications. Dr. Westbury, I don't think you had a chance yet to answer this, this question that come up of, about antisemitism and if you want to weigh in on this as well.
Yes, I do. It's extremely troubling to me. But what I have found out is that this is going on across the country. It's not just here. I had a chance recently to read a spreadsheet of over 200 school boards across the country. And it had in every column, they had, they had different topics that had come up at school board meetings. And there was a pattern of all of these 200 school districts across the country. And simultaneously, at their meetings, the same things were coming up, which is very concerning because it means that there's some kind of group or there's someone who's putting forth all of this across the country. And I think that we need to be very aware of what's going on and stand up, be upstanders, not bystanders.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have time for one or two more questions, but I want to give you a flavor for what some of the things that are coming in because as I said, this forum is also about US candidates getting to know what people are concerned about. So some of the things are coming in, questions about, uh, what's the future for coexistence in Collier County of charter and public schools? Some have asked about what's happening with the COVID relief funding that came in and how has that changed and impacted our schools and our budget? A few have also asked about what's the plan for, where do we go from here educationally speaking? That a few years ago Cambridge was touted and not quite sure where that is right now, but also is, what's the looking forward for magnet programming, other ways to increase our programming, to engage different students? Then a few have also asked to find out what's happening. You touched earlier about the, this population of migrant children or children of migrant worker families. How are we meeting the needs of those students within our diverse community? So with all those questions floating out there, I'm going to do the very moderator thing of giving each of you a chance to touch on those topics or give your final thoughts as we near our end time here. What is it you'd like us to know about in regard to some of these topics that are out there? And how, how do you think we might be able to address some of these subjects?
Can I jump in on that?
Absolutely.
Great. So just, just to make clear, Collier County Public Schools has a great working relationship with all of the charters in Collier, with the exception of the charter run by my opponent. Um, during our time on the board, uh, this last four years, we actually approved two new charters here in Collier. Two new classical options. So, um, great relationships a- around the board. In terms of, um, the funding, the COVID funding, one of the things that we actually recently asked RSM, who is our risk assessment, uh, provider to do is to go back and audit that money for us, just to make sure that we, we spent it properly, um, to take a deeper dive into that money, just, just, um, for the purposes of transparency for the community. Uh, but I can tell you that money was spent to offer Saturday school, um, in some very targeted, um, areas. We were able to increase the school day by 30 minutes, again, in very targeted areas. And we feel like the return on investment was great because for the first time ever, every Amokalei Elementary School is an A or B rated school. Every school in the Golden Gate feeder pattern, elementary, middle and high school is an A or B rated school. So we do feel like we use those dollars wisely and we were able to make gains and really move the needle for our kids. Um, in terms of Cambridge though, Cambridge is still, um, uh, we, we still use Cambridge at the elementary level, but the idea with Cambridge is the, the types of, um, the best practices around delivering the Cambridge model are best practices in teaching anyway. And so the idea is that yes, there are, are, um, it used to be, you know, one or two classrooms at every level was a Cambridge room. And what we've done now is, is made sure that all teachers understand the best practices and are implementing the best practices around Cambridge, like Socratic seminars and those types of things. So, um, did I miss anything?
You covered some of the broad pieces there. Anyone else want to jump in on some of those topics?
I'll jump in a little bit on migrant, uh, students, uh. Dr. Westbury mentioned before that we have a large population. We actually have the largest population east of the Mississippi River. So our migrant students are getting a lot of extra help. Lot of extra work. 10 years ago, our migrant students were graduating at about a 48% rate, which means about half of them. Now it's up to over 90. So I think we're doing a good job of migrant students. Go ahead, Dr. Westbury.
I wanted to say a few things about other programs that we've put in place in Collier. We have an entrepreneurship program that started at the middle school and now is in elementary schools in fifth grade. And these students are learning how to be an entrepreneur by problem solving, by communication skills with their teams, because they're, all the students are divided into small teams. And they have, um, they have done great things already in the first part of fifth grade. So that's a, that's an exciting program. The students in middle school actually create a product and they have to sell it. Uh, they have to promote it and sell it to students to make a profit. So it's like a little mini shark tanks that are, that are going on. The other thing that I find really remarkable is the career pathways that have been developed in Collier County schools. In Amokalei, the district has partnered with an architectural and building company that has donated, I believe it's eight acres. Correct me if I'm wrong, Roy. And they are putting buildings, housing up on these, these, this acreage. And the students go over from Amokalei High School, they learn plumbing skills, building, tiling, electrical, you name it. They are learning those skills and they have jobs before they ever leave high school. So there's a lot of really exciting things going on as far as the trades, careers and so on. And many of our kids are becoming, um, let's see, uh, airline, um, well, they're getting their pilot's license before they graduate from high school. There are aeronautics, uh, repairs, air conditioning, plumbing. Um, I can't, cosmetology, nursing. I mean, there's so many careers that these, that these students are participating in and they are ready to go before they leave high school.
Wonderful. The three of you handled that lightning round very well. I appreciate that. And we are nearing the time when everyone's going to turn into a Zoom pumpkin. So as we get to our final thoughts, there's a question that came in, I think is a great way to frame this. You each have the experience of having been a candidate and now served on the school board. What differentiates the experience of running for and actually serving our community? And how does that shape what you want people to leave this forum with tonight?
Yeah. So I would, I'll jump in on that. Um, I would just say, you know, there's a competency that comes from having done the job when you're talking about, you know, 1.387 billion dollars, um, understanding how we arrive at that number. Um, we need to know that it's more than that. It's just a big number. Um, and so, you know, there's a competency around that. Uh, the same is true around district scores, um, state scores, grading, those types of things. Uh, you know, it's, it's, when, when you're running, um, you, you have all kinds of, of ideas and, and, um, you have a vision for what you want to accomplish, but you know what you realize when you get onto this board is that you're one of five people. Um, and if there's dysfunction and you cannot work together, you can't get much accomplished. So I am so proud of what we've been able to accomplish because I truly deeply respect, um, my colleagues. I think we've, because we have such a hardworking staff, we have teachers that are so dedicated to their mission every day. Um, and we have a functional. And we have a functional cohesive board that understands what the district needs and, and how to, how to push the needle forward. We've been able to achieve. And so it's, it's been the honor of my lifetime to serve and I hope to do, to do so for another four years.
One of the things I think is, is that I think you have to understand that we're here dealing with people's children. And anytime we make a decision, when you're on the board, you're making that decision around whether it's good for children or not. And as long as you keep that, that focus in your mind, that you are dealing with children from various ages, from various backgrounds. Some have parents, some don't have parents. We have a large number of homeless children that go to our schools that we have to deal with. So there are many different programs that are going on in the school, and it's not as simple as a lot of people that are running for the first time think it might be. And a lot of times, they have no idea until they get on the board, what it's going to require them. Because as Ms. Mitchell said, it's very important that everybody works together. And if you work together, the machine works and it puts out an excellent product. And I think this board, along with the superintendent, has worked hard to make sure that we put out a good product. And I think it comes to show in our scores, graduation rate up to ninety-two point seven percent from way down ten years ago. And we're moving in a positive direction. We are the lighthouse of the Southwest Florida in terms of school scores in this area. And I want to keep it that way. Thank you.
I, I couldn't agree with Mr. Terry and Mrs. Mitchell more. We have a cohesive group. We don't always agree, but we can disagree with respect. And that's, I ju, I can't say how important that is to a functioning board. And I admire my colleagues and the staff, the hardworking people that put this district on the map every single year. They're doing fantastic things and I appreciate them. And I hope that we can get our educators back on track. They are the glue that help families and students succeed. And they do not need the disrespect that they're getting.
I want to thank our three panelists, Mr. Terry, Dr. Westbury, and Ms. Mitchell for spending their time with us tonight, for educating us on where they are and for bringing such wonderful information and insights into our community. As you have heard tonight, they are each running for a different seat in a different district. And that everybody in Collier County will be voting for three different positions. So we want to make sure that everyone is aware and does their research and knows that you're voting for three different districts. You have an opportunity to vote this year. Before I get to my closing, I understand, Ms. Mitchell, you wanted to add one last piece to the puzzle?
Thank you. I just wanted to add one thing, because we, we may have listeners this evening who are taxpayers. They don't necessarily have kids in our schools, but they pay taxes to keep our schools running tip-top. We are on track to be debt-free by twenty-twenty-six. There's no other district in the state of Florida that can say that. We are paying cash for the new high school currently under construction to save taxpayers forty-one million dollars in interest payments. And we're the only district in the state of Florida to pass a tax-neutral referendum. Twenty-two other districts went back to ask for more money from their stakeholders. We didn't do that. Our referendum simply asked permission to move money from the capital side of the budget to the operational side. So for those of you writing that check, we are grateful to you. And we want you to know that we are, we are good stewards of your money.
Thank you for that last little piece of information. So as I was saying, please remember to do your research and know that you are, all have the opportunity in Collier County to vote on all three district races. You've heard from our individuals tonight where their positions are, and we appreciate our panelists taking time to participate in this forum. Know that each of you is able to give insight and information on these critical issues that will enable all of us to be informed voters, which is vital for us to know in advance of the election, so we can vote on those who will act in the best interests of our children, our schools, and our community. Tonight's event would not have been possible without the sponsoring organizations Temple Shalom, the Greater Naples Chamber of Commerce, the Holocaust Museum, and Cohen Education Center, the Jewish Federation of Greater Naples, Naples United Church of Christ, and Saint Monica's Episcopal Church. The recording of this event will be available on the Temple Shalom of Naples YouTube channel and through the other sponsoring organizations. We end tonight with a quote from Benjamin Franklin, who said, "Investment in knowledge pays the best interest." "The choices we make during this election cycle will be our investment in the learning and knowledge base of our children, grandchildren, and all the youth of Southwest Florida. May we choose wisely, thoughtfully, and may the interest from those choices bear fruit for generations yet to come." Thank you again, everyone, for being a part of this. Have a wonderful night.